City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Patrice.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holm.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
I'm here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Eight with one coming. Oh, nine.
There are nine of us here. We do have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, January 24, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item is Mayor's Public Announcements, and I have a few things to tell you, which I think I will put in written form, about the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which I attended last week. I think you've already pretty much gotten a report from the city manager about it all, so I won't add to that. City Manager, do you have public announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, good evening. A very special evening tonight with the promotion of two officers at the Evanston Police Department. Richard Eddington, the Chief of Police, is here, and Madam Mayor, he would like your assistance, as well as the City Clerk's assistance. Chief Eddington?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'd like to present, first of all, soon-to-be Commander Dan Russell to take the oath of office for the position of Police Commander at the Evanston Police Department.
Hi. Dana Russell. Having been promoted to the office of Police Commander.
Having been promoted to the office of Police Commander.
In the City of Evanston and the County of Cook, Forsyth.
In the City of Evanston and the County of Cook, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Police Commander.
And faithfully discharge the offices of Police Commander.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Another pledge.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. I pledge to support and commitment to the mission and values of the Evanston Police Department.
I pledge to support and commitment to the mission and values of the Evanston Police Department.
And to promoting and partnership with the community.
And promoting the partnership with the community.
I also pledge my support and commitment to the customer service policy of the City of Evanston.
I pledge my support and commitment to the customer service policy of the City of Evanston.
Last but not least, your law enforcement oath of honor. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have.
I will always have.
The courage to hold myself.
The courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve.
I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve.
Congratulations, Matt. Thank you very much.
Take the congratulations of the members on the dais, please. I'd like to call forward Jeff Jamraz to take the oath of office for Deputy Chief of Police.
Raise your right hand. You have to raise your name. Say aye.
Aye.
Jeffrey Jamraz.
Having been promoted to the office of Deputy Police Chief.
Having been promoted to the office of Deputy Police Chief.
In the City of Evanston.
In the City of Evanston.
In the County of Cook, Forsyth.
In the County of Cook, Forsyth.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Deputy Police Chief.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Deputy Police Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I pledge my support and commitment to the mission and values of the Evanston Police Department.
I pledge my support and commitment to the mission and values of the Evanston Police Department.
And to promoting the partnership with the community.
And to promoting the partnership with the community.
I pledge my support and commitment.
I pledge my support and commitment.
To the customer service policy of the City of Evanston.
To the customer service policy of the City of Evanston.
My last. Law enforcement oath of honor. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve.
I will always uphold the Constitution and the community I serve.
In closing, your honored members on the dais, I'd like to express appreciation of the families that came out and support the officers to be promoted, and also a number of their fellow professionals from neighboring departments came by to support them.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, as individuals are leaving the chamber, our next presentation is from Dave Stonebeck, our Director of Utilities. As you know, there's been much discussion in the local press over the last several weeks regarding water quality, and we thought it would be appropriate this evening to give you an update on the water quality here in the City of Evanston. We've also made a little video, which we're going to take you on a visit to our water quality laboratory to give you a sense of the testing that we do every day. And so Dave will let you start off and introduce the video.
Hi, I'm Dave Stoneback, Director of Utilities, and with me is Kevin Lucas, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Water Production at the Treatment Plant. Before we start the video, there's two items that have recently been in the news. One is the use of fluoride, which we do add to our water to promote good dental health. Currently, state law requires that we feed it at a rate between .9 and 1.2 parts per million, and we average about one part per million in our feed. The regulations are being considered to reduce the level to .7, and we are all in favor of doing such, that applying the rate at that level, once the state law is changed and allows us to do that. And that would be a considerable cost savings to all of us, because fluoride is a fairly expensive chemical that we add. The other item that's been in the news lately is chromium VI, or hexavalent chromium. The Public Health Department in the State of California originally came out with a goal to set the level of chromium VI to .06 parts per billion, and right now, U.S. EPA regulates that we only test for total chlorine, and they set the level at 100 parts per billion. More recently, that same group in California lowered their suggested goal to .02 parts per billion, and so it made a lot of press again. U.S. EPA, at this point in time, has indicated that they do not plan to change the level, and we don't feel that it is necessary to do either. We are getting our sampling bottles tomorrow to be able to test the raw water, the treated water, and a sample from the distribution system as well, to see what the chromium VI level is in the Evanston water, and we expect to have the results potentially by the end of the week, if not the early part of next week. And then, as the city manager indicated, we prepared a video, it's approximately 10 minutes long, about our water quality lab at the Treatment Plant. We are a fairly secure building over there, so a lot of people don't get to our water quality lab, but we are very proud of it. We are regulated by the Illinois Department of Health. We have to get certified every two years in our lab, and for the past two certifications, we scored 100 percent. In other words, we had zero deviations from meeting the requirements of that organization. Our staff is incredible over there. We have a chemist and a microbiologist that staff the laboratory during normal work hours, and then we have five water plant operators that work in the filtration section that also do a lot of lab testing during the evenings and over the weekends. So we have a very good staff that does that. Without further ado, I'd like to start the video. Hi, I'm Dave Stoneback, Director of Utilities for the City of Evanston. I'm here to welcome you to our water quality laboratory at the water treatment facility. The lab is a critical part of our treatment process. The lab is staffed by a chemist, a microbiologist, and our five water treatment plant operators in filtration section. The lab is utilized 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and some of the testing is done once an hour. The lab is utilized to monitor quality of the lake or raw water to determine the proper chemical doses to allow for the most effective treatment of water. The level of cloudiness or particulate matter in the water, commonly referred to as turbidity, is measured along with pH, temperature, acuteness, and hardness of the raw water. Based on this information, the lab staff determines the appropriate level of coagulants to add to the water to begin the treatment process. The turbidity of the water is also checked in the middle of the treatment process to assure that the process is working appropriately. Finally, the turbidity of the finished or potable water is checked to make sure that all large particles that could harbor potentially harmful pathogens have been removed. The turbidity standard for finished water is to have a turbidity of less than .3 NTU in 95 percent of your samples, and no samples exceeding 1 NTU. The finished water leaving the Evanston Treatment Facility has an average turbidity of .08 NTU, well below the required standard. The other major factor in water treatment is maintaining an appropriate chlorine residual. Chlorine is added as a disinfectant to neutralize any pathogens that might be in the water. The chlorine residual is monitored on a continuous basis using inline analyzers at both the beginning of the treatment process and in the finished water. The lab staff confirms these readings by testing samples from both of these sites on an hourly basis. Testing for turbidity and maintaining an appropriate chlorine residual are considered to be the two most important parameters in providing safe drinking water. The water quality lab also tests samples of the finished water to determine the level of fluoride and phosphate. In accordance with state law, fluoride is added to the water to help promote good dental health. The lab performs testing to make sure that the level of fluoride in the water is within the concentration range established by the state. Phosphate is added to the water to inhibit lead and copper corrosion, minimizing the level of these metals in the water. The phosphate forms a thin coating on the inside of lead and copper pipe shoes in the buildings to prohibit the water from coming in contact with the metal materials, thus limiting the concentration of these metals in the water. The lab staff also performs microbiological monitoring using the membrane filter process. Microbiological monitoring is completed on samples from four different phases of the treatment process, twice per day. In addition, a minimum of 80 samples are collected from various locations throughout the city and analyzed to ensure that the water in the distribution system is safe. With me is Kevin Lucas, the Assistant Superintendent of Water Production for the Treatment Plant. He's going to demonstrate some of the tests that are performed in the lab and give an explanation of the equipment utilized here.
Thanks, Dave. We'll move right along. We're taking a look now at the sampling sink that we use to monitor all phases of the water treatment process. As you can see, these two are actually raw water, at our intakes and at the wells, coming right out of the lake. This is right after we've added all the chemicals in what's called our flash mix. This is water that is just entering the filters prior to the filtration process. This is the combined effluent after we have filtered all the water, and this is a tap sample, which is actually out on Lincoln Avenue, to mimic a tap that is just like in someone's home. Now, before anybody gets too concerned, please note that all of this water is not down a sewer, it goes back to the front of the Treatment Plant, and it is re-treated again. So we are very sustainable here when it comes to water. Right now, we're taking a look at the inline turbidimeters that we use to monitor the treatment process. If you take a look here, this is the raw water turbidity, and turbidity is measured in NTU, as Dave mentioned, and that stands for nephelometric turbidity units, which really means the cloudiness or the particulate matter in the water. As you can see, the raw water turbidity is a little bit just under 21 NTUs. Now, after we add chemicals in the flash mix, coagulants, et cetera, and let the water settle out, we then measure the turbidity again. We call that the filter influent. As you can see, the turbidity has gone from 21 down to 1.74 NTU, which is a huge drop in a very short period of time. After the water leaves the settling basins, it goes through all of our filters. We have 24 sand filters. We are a conventional treatment process, using conventional sand and anthracite, which is coal, filtration processes. You can see that at that point, the effluent leaving the filters is between .059 and .060, and then the very last one on your right is the actual tap sample, and it, again, is identical to the effluent at .060 NTUs. With us here today in the lab is Al Diaz Mazzarito. He's our microbiologist, and he is preparing the plates that we use to test for total coliform bacteria. Right now, we are watching our microbiologist, Al, perform the membrane filtration test. He's putting a .45 micron filter into the filter assembly and then adding 100 mL of sample to be analyzed. The filter assembly is rinsed with lab pure deionized water as soon as the sample has gone through the funnel, and at this time, Al will then remove the filter and place it onto the media dish for later incubation. He's currently performing these tests as part of the control samples that we do each day here at the laboratory. As you just saw, Al put the samples that are being run right now into the incubator, where they will be incubated for 24 hours. Earlier, you saw him making up the Mendo plates, which is what we use to monitor and test for total coliform, and they are now stored here in the refrigerator. What we're looking at now is the incubator we use to test the water for taste and odors. We do this on a daily basis in order to ensure that the water is odor-free. Keep in mind that all of the record-keeping involved, that these particular instruments need to be maintained and kept very closely, and are part of the audit and the process from which the lab is certified by the Illinois Department of Public Health.[1235.21][1235.21](applause) I wanted to point out the certification we have from the Illinois Department of Public Health. This is the audit that we've referred to several times, the members of council and the residents of the City of Evanston. Our lab has received a score of two times in a row with zero deviations, so a perfect score, in 2007 and again in 2009. It is very rare for a lab to achieve a rating of zero deviations once, let alone twice. So our chemist, Al Diaz Mazzarito, and our laboratory supervisor and chemist, Eleanor Mead, are to be commended for the efforts they put forth to maintain laboratory compliance. The lab does not have all the equipment necessary to perform many other tests that are required by the Safe Drinking Water Act. Since the water treatment facility provides water to over 360,000 people, it's considered to be a large water supply facility. As such, we are required not only to test for the presence of inorganic, synthetic organic, inviolate organic contaminants required by the act, but also test for potential future parameters, such as cryptosporidium, as required by the Long-Term Two-Surface Water Rule, and 25 additional compounds as required by the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. The U.S. EPA requires larger supplies, such as Evanston, to test for the presence of these compounds, to determine what compounds will be regulated in the future, and establish an appropriate contaminant level for them, should they become a required chemical parameter. The lab staff is responsible for collecting these samples for these tests, as well as the record-keeping, chain of custody, and reporting of the test results to the State of Illinois. In all, Evanston's finished water is tested for over 100 quality parameters by an outside lab that the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency has certified as an approved lab for this type of testing. We are pleased to announce that the presence of all 100 parameters were non-detectable in the Evanston finished water.
In closing, we want to assure the residents of Evanston and those in our wholesale water supply communities that the staff at the Evanston Water Division is committed to providing safe, potable drinking water. Thank you.[1373.61][1373.61](applause)
Alderman Rainey. Could we find out if any of these wonderful people who do all this work are in our audience tonight, or is it just Kevin and Dave?
Actually, our chemist Eleanor Mead is on maternity leave, and our microbiologist is not present.
I hope somebody's filling in for Ellen while she's gone.
Actually, Al's picked up his duty. Kevin's down in the lab a lot, and, again, a lot of our operators, well, all of our water plant operators in filtration section are certified to do the vast majority of testing as well.
Alderman Grover. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've done the tour of our water plant a couple times now, I think. It's just fascinating, and you have opened it up to public tours, I think, a couple times last year. Am I right? Really interesting, and I just had a question, and I've forgotten the answer. What affects the turbidity of the raw water that we draw from the lake? It's not always the same. It varies, doesn't it, the number?
That's correct. In fact, in December, we had a, what we call a turbidity incident, where we had well over 100 NTUs, which is really high. The water ends up looking just like mud, but the beautiful thing was, is that we still had .08 leaving the treatment plant. So, you know, we gear up and we keep an eye on it, but it varies anywhere. In the middle of winter, like next week sometime, it'll start to get really low again. It becomes even harder to treat when the turbidity is very low, because the chemicals don't want to mix, the water's very cold, and the turbidity level's very low. So it can go down to one or two NTUs in the raw water, which is, you know, almost needs no treatment whatsoever, just filtration. So there is that variability. We are fortunate with Lake Michigan. It is one of the most beautiful sources of water to treat worldwide, because while it does vary, those variations are usually pretty predictable, and we can see when they happen. People that treat water, say, on the Mississippi River, can see the turbidity NTUs go to 500 in a matter of 10 minutes, just immediately. So that water is a lot more difficult to treat than what we have here.
And what affects the turbidity? What are the things that are happening in the lake that changes it?
Turbidity, really, it's just, when you try to explain it, it's a function of the cloudiness or the particulate matter in the water, and so what you base that on is that bacteria could be part of that particulate matter. So it's a trigger mechanism. So you want to remove all of it, or you get it down to what the standards are, because you then, you realize that you don't have any of the particulate bacteria there. What's left, you hope, then, will be completely eradicated by your disinfectant.
But what creates the turbidity is wave action, a change of direction of the winds, and actually, there's a thermal changeover of the water as well. The warm water on the top actually reverses with the cold water, and when that occurs, and with the strong winds, that's what stirs up the turbidity in the lake and increases the amount of suspended solids.
Surface runoff is another, you know, source of it. We're fortunate here that the lake was reversed in that regard, because a lot of the surface water turbidity that we could get really goes down the Illinois River, the Chicago River, Illinois River, into the Mississippi. So, you know, some other communities, when you look at Milwaukee, and they've had some serious issues there, the Milwaukee River flows right in near the intake in some ways, so it makes it more difficult.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, unless there's any other questions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Alderman Rainey. Could I just, not everybody knows what turbidity is. Could we have a simple drinker's explanation? Not a scientific, I mean, somebody's drinking the water.[1609.41][1609.41](laughter)
It's the amount of cloudiness in the water. We showed three cups with a quarter in the bottom of it, and you could see the quarter very well in the clear water, the potable water, and not so well in the lake water, and it's that suspended solids and cloudiness that's the turbidity. Unlike the tiny air bubbles that you can get, the white bubbles that come up, that's not turbidity, that's just air entrained into the water. If the particles settle to the bottom, then that would be turbidity.
So do people running water out of their faucet with Evanston water, do they ever see that? Because I've never seen that.
No, again, the water that's leaving our water plant has a turbidity, on average, of .08. By law, it has to be below .3, so we're well below that, and, again, it's a matter of our water source being Lake Michigan and our treatment process. And, again, adding the chemicals, in the video, we went from a turbidity of 21 to 1.7, and that's all done just by adding chemicals. So the particles that are in the lake generally have a negative charge. We add particles that have a positive charge. We mix the two together so that the particles become larger and heavier in weight, and then they are in the settling basin, the water's in the settling basin for four hours. It allows the particles to settle to, basically, the floor, to the ground, and then that water is, the turbidity in that water is greatly reduced, and then it goes into our filters between the anthracite and the sand. That's where we move that point, or, I'm sorry, 1.7 down to .08. So the filters are our final polishing.
Alderman Grover. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where does one go to learn the business that you're in? How does one become Kevin Lucas and Dave Stoneback?
Go to college and study. For me, it was, I studied wastewater engineering, and Kevin is a chemist by.
Chemist in microbiology. That's the background for water treatment, and we don't have near enough people going into it.
It's an interesting career track.
What's that?
It's an interesting career track. So thank you for encouraging it with the internships I know that you're doing with high school students in your office.
Madam Mayor, unless there's any other questions. Thank you, gentlemen. We will post the video on our YouTube channel, so that if anyone's interested and wants to get a refresher, they can find it on the Internet. We have two additional announcements. I'd like to have Matt Swankowski, our Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator, come up and fill you in about an event that the Chicago Transit Authority's having here in town on Thursday evening.
Matt Swankowski, Intergovernmental Affairs Coordinator. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Alderman, City Manager. Just going to speak to you very, very briefly tonight about the CTA Public Scoping Meeting that's going to be happening this Thursday at Fleetwood Jordan, starting at 6:30. As you already know, CTA has proposed- As you already know, CTA is proposing to make improvements subject to financial, basically, funding availability of the North Red and Purple Lines. Improvements are proposed to bring the existing transit stations, track systems, and structures into a state of good repair, starting at Belmont, moving all the way to Linden. CTA, as part of this process, is required to perform alternative analysis and conduct environmental impact studies, as well as conduct public open meetings, which is going to be happening on Thursday. These analyses inform local officials, community residents, and members, and solicit input on what both public and elected officials want to see in these plans moving forward, so that the community itself can help identify some of the alternatives. That's what's going to be happening on Thursday. Additionally, public comments on Thursday, and those submitted electronically or to the CTA, which I'm going to talk about very briefly in a second, on potential options that are necessary for a major corridor or transmit investment like the North Red-Purple Line. It's a part of federal regulations that they go out and solicit this important input from both the government officials and the public. I myself and other key, and other city staff have extended invitations to both the residents of the city, different stakeholders, different organizations throughout the city, to make sure that they are a part of this process, that their input is taken to CTA. And that's what Thursday is all about. We've made these invitations. We really want a large crowd there to look at the alternatives that CTA has proposed and provide input. We've done this in many different ways. We've done, used the media. We've put the information up on city website, made personal phone calls, as well as emails. I want to stress that Thursday night is a public input process, that many of the alternatives that you see are not finalized, but there are some alternatives that they are discussing. And it gives us, as a city, an opportunity to give our input and to make constructive changes to what is going to be going on moving forward. It's important that the residents come out, and the beneficiaries come out on Thursday, because the CTA will take this information to heart, and when they move forward with what's called a locally-preferred alternative, which is basically a local impact on what the alternative and what the transit project will look like moving forward in the next months, years, and such. One important thing to mention, if people cannot attend, there is actually information on the website that they can contact CTA to submit their comments. I can also serve as a conduit as well for people's comments if they'd like to contact me. My contact information is under the Intergovernmental Affairs site on the city website, and I will go ahead and forward those comments to CTA. And it's also available via the CTA website, which is transitauthority.org. And I can answer any questions at this time.
I have one question, Matt. It's my understanding that turnout is critical to the CTA, because part of what we're trying to do is to convince them to spend a lot of money on transit. This being a transit-oriented town, we desperately need the Purple Line, and we need it fixed. So turnout is critical. It's not just input, it's getting this thing fixed.
Absolutely, Mayor. Turnout is key. The more voices, the better.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Yeah. There may be folks who are not online, who maybe want to contact you, so could you give them?
Absolutely. They can contact me via email, which is M.Swankowski, let me spell that out.
It's still online.
It is. Or you can call me. My number is area code, 847-859-7835. And I can take those comments and give them to CTA as well.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt, if you could let our friends at Northwestern University know about this, though, so they can send out a blast email to students, letting them know that their train stations might be affected, I think that's really important to do.
Absolutely, Alderman Fisk. We have, as part of the outreach, Northwestern was one of the groups that I've extensively reached out with phone calls and emails.
Alderman Rainey?
What is the format of the meeting?
It, I'm actually going to be attending, they have four meetings, and the fourth one will be the one in Evanston. I will be attending one tomorrow night after work. It's going to be a presentation by CTA, and then it'll allow comments from the public.
Right, because some people might remember going to the previous event at Fleetwood, which was more of like a fair, you know? So that should be made clear to people that this is a very serious meeting, where there's going to be a presentation and a response from the community. And could you comment on, I don't believe it's a rumor, it was in writing, about the possibility of South Boulevard Station being closed?
Yeah. There are, as I indicated earlier, as part of the CTA alternatives, there are some proposals that discuss closing both South and Foster. In those that are just under discussion, alternatives, according to CTA process. But those are, those are under discussion, so.
Well, the fact that it's even mentioned is serious, as far as I'm concerned.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Alderman Win?
Paul Schneider and I were at the CTA last week for the initial presentation of the plans by the CTA staff, and we talked to them specifically about the potential closures. And they said that we should make sure that folks in Evanston expressed their views about that, those ideas, and what our concerns would be. They commented to us that the turnout for the visioning process was very impressive, that they, it was the best of any group, that any community that they'd had those visioning meetings in. And they really took a lot of the comments that Evanstonians presented at that meeting to heart. I would also say that the, I believe the presentation that we saw last week will be repeated at these meetings. So it's, you know, a PowerPoint program where they describe it, and then they open up the, they're planning to open it up for questions. But it is really critical that we come out and let them know what our views are of this. And it's, I would urge people to go online and study the plan, because there's a lot of detail on it. They explained that these are just alternatives at this point, and they want to hear comment. They did describe to us on the south end of the red line how, in response to communities, the very far south end of the red line is also under proposal for renovation, that they did opt for the locally-preferred alternative. They listened to the communities there, and they changed the plan. So this is our opportunity to come out and make sure they understand what our interests are.
Right. Madam Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Rainey?
Matt, or someone in this room, could you please explain to people how, if they are dependent on the Purple Line, how do they get to Fleetwood Jordane at 6 o'clock at night? How do you get there from the Purple Line? And don't say walk, because it's just too cold and too far. But what bus? How do people get there? That I don't know.
It stops at Emerson and Dewey, and then you walk.
Can you talk into the mic?
What bus? What bus?
I don't know.
Oh, well, we need to, I mean.
Alderman Rainey?
I think it, I think it's a very challenging location. It's a very challenging location for a meeting that has to do with possibly, you know, cutting out stations that are on the Purple Line.
Alderman Rainey, you're correct, but they can call the mayor, and I will figure out a way to get them there, because we need people to turn out.
There is a bus that stops at Dewey and Emerson, and you walk one block north. I don't, just, I don't know the number of the bus.
93.
93, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Madam Mayor, members of the council?
Thank you, Matt.
And a final presentation. Catherine Hurley, our Sustainable Programs Coordinator, is here to talk about a new battery recycling program.
One more thing, Madam Mayor. Is that a PACE bus or a CTA bus? I think it's a PACE.
Nice planning.
Madam Mayor and members of city council, Catherine Hurley, Sustainable Programs Coordinator in the city manager's office. We have just a real brief, exciting announcement about a partnership with the Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County and Interstate Batteries, now providing a battery recycling program. We're going to have green containers in the Civic Center here on the ground floor, as well as in the Levy Senior Center, that will be collecting batteries the whole year long. This is pretty exciting, because many places are not recycling batteries any longer, and we get frequent calls. Interstate Batteries and the Solid Waste Agency have partnered together to make this program free to Evanston community. So we'll be accepting batteries during normal business hours here, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and at the Levy Senior Center, Monday through Friday, 9 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and then Saturday and Sunday, 9 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They'll be taking rechargeable batteries, as well as all types of regular household alkaline batteries. And the only special note is that for any rechargeable batteries, they need to have masking tape on the contact points or put in individual plastic bags that they don't leak. But other than that, anyone has batteries they've been holding on to. Look for the green bins in the first floor of the Civic Center or the ground floor here, excuse me, and the Levy Senior Center. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have one communication. Just want to let you know that the city of Evanston has applied for a loan with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for sewer rehabilitation work. And the proposal and the outline of the information will be available in the clerk's office for perusal until February the 10th. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Manager, Special Order of Business.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have three items for you this evening. The first is an update on the process for the construction of a new community center and ice rink within Crown Park. Our Parks Recreation Community Services Department is here. I believe Mr. DiAgostino, the Superintendent of Facilities and Forestry, will give the report for the department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Paul DiAgostino, Superintendent of Parks, Forestry and Facilities Management. This process started quite some time ago to look at the possibility of rebuilding the Robert Crown Center. We've had numerous meetings. We did issue an RFQ originally. I believe seven or eight teams of firms replied to that initial request. We narrowed the teams down, conducted multiple interviews, and have narrowed the field down to three teams of consultants. Each team is represented here tonight to give a short presentation. And I'd like to first introduce the team led by Harbor Contractors. I have Mr. Patrick Callahan would, you can go over there, too.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, City Clerk Green and City Manager Bob Kvitz. I am Pat Callahan, representing the team of Harbor Contractors. Our team is comprised of three very distinctive individuals in the field of recreation. We have Fred Borowski, who is our operations and facility management specialist, Harbor Contract and General Contracting, Studio GC, who is the architect, and also Ralph McGitney of Oppenheimer, who is our financier. We have a very simple focus, and actually, joining me here this evening is Andy Pogozzi, one of the architects on our team. But we have a very simple focus on our team, and that is a program-driven facility generates and creates a community asset and also provides a stream of readily-available operational funding. So our goal is to design a facility that actually complements the existing uses, expands opportunities for programming, and creates a community center at the Robert Crown Center. So we're very happy to be part of the shortlist of three and to be standing here before you this evening, just to give you a brief update on who we are, an introduction, and look very much forward to the next step in the process, which is to actually formally provide some additional information and some actual costing information. So happy to take any questions or allow the next team to present.
Seeing no lights, I think you've answered all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Edmund Woodbury from McCaffrey, McCaffrey Interests.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council. My name's Ed Woodbury, with the development firm of McCaffrey Interests here in Chicago. Our team is comprised of a team of experts. With me tonight is Joseph Antonovich of Antonovich Associates and Michael Farron from W. O'Neill Construction. Joining them, and couldn't be here tonight, are also a facility development consultant, facility operations consultant, and finance experts as well, too. Our goal, like many of the teams, I believe, is to deliver to the city of Evanston a project and a new facility that would function very well for the city, and most importantly, be economically sustainable for the city as well, too. We think we have some exciting ideas that we've presented to staff, and look forward to the opportunity of presenting an actual proposal when staff comes forward with that request later this year, which I think is their intent.
Thank you very much.
And lastly, I will introduce Alex Granchalek from William Blair &amp; Company.
Very intimate here. Good evening. My name is Alex Granchalek. I'm with William Blair &amp; Company here in Chicago, a resident of the city's 4th Ward. Thank you for the opportunity to come in and introduce ourselves and what we think is an outstanding team to bring to the city a fantastic new Crown Center. Our goal here is to bring a quality facility with an effective financing plan and maintain flexibility in programming for the life of the facility. With regard to William Blair &amp; Company, we've been in business since 1935, certainly took no bailout funds and had no TARP issues, one of the most active debt underwriters, and one of the most active public-private partnership providers in the country. I'm going to have Louis English, another Evanston resident, talk some more about William Blair &amp; Company. Then we'll have representatives of Walsh, Club Sports Consulting Group, David Woodhouse Architects, Conamou, and Chicago Baseball Experience talk about what they plan to bring to the city of Evanston.
Good evening. My name is Louis English. I'm also an Evanston resident. I have children here in Evanston who use the existing Crown facility now. So I do have a vested interest in seeing the city refurbished Crown and make it a, you know, modern, vibrant facility going forward. I think William Blair is uniquely qualified to handle the debt financing of said facility, given our expertise, our history. We've done deals from very small, very simple deals, to very large, very complex deals. We're a lead underwriter this spring on the $800 million financing for the state of Illinois, which we were roundly commended on. We outperformed the Wall Street firms when they were given opportunities to do the same sorts of financing. Next, we have Conamou, the architect.
Good evening. My name is Stevie Conamou, the Conamou Partners Architects out of Park Ridge. I'm also an Evanston resident, grew up here, my family grew up here. We specialize in sports and recreation. We're a family-owned business. We've done eight of the Chicagoland ice rinks, and also done two retrofits of existing Chicagoland ice rinks. And we will be teaming up with David Woodhouse. David Woodhouse Architects will be the lead designer, and we'll be working together on this project. So I'll turn this over to David.
Thank you. My name is David Woodhouse. I'm the president of David Woodhouse Architects in Chicago. My firm specializes in helping communities build public facilities for their residents. We've been very fortunate to be able to work here in Evanston before with Doug Gainer and his staff, and also your residents. and his staff and also your residents on the reconfiguration of the Dempster Street Sailing Beach that was open this summer, and also on the Clark Street Beach Building, which earned a Design Evanston Design Award for the city. Thank you.
Don Wetzel with Walsh Construction Company. Walsh Construction, as you know, is one of the largest contractors in the nation. We really look forward to a very stellar team here to design, build, and deliver this project in a seamless, on-budget and on-time fashion and the sensitivity to the residential community that exists there. It's a very unique site, will have very unique challenges and sensitivity to that marketplace along with sound control and input from the local community to make sure that it is a seamless delivery.
Don?
Good evening, my name's Don Lopato, Club Sports. I'm part of a great team that we put together here. Currently, Club Sports manages two facilities, one on the North Shore and one out in West Dundee. And the facilities are set up exactly the way we plan on financing this one. So we've had some, we've had success in bringing, you know, covering debt service and obviously running a top-end facility, which is what we plan on bringing to Evanston. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Larry Gould. I'm with Chicago Baseball Experience. We build and manage youth baseball fields, and I'm looking forward to working with the Evanston Youth Baseball.
Again, any questions? We'd appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Seeing no lights, I think you've answered all our questions. Thank you very much.
Mr. Gaynor will conclude with an overview of what we're proposing as next steps. Mr. Gaynor?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Members of the Council, and Clerk Green. From this point on, we currently have two RFPs out. One is a feasibility study, and that's out to bid, as well as an environmental study, which is out to bid. These two documents will be provided while those are to the consulting teams along with a request for proposal, including a contract that we're working on, and obviously various departments. So we believe sometime in June, the RFP will go out to these three pre-qualified consulting teams. We would expect that sometime in September, we would be back before you with a recommendation. And again, the project is to design, build, finance, and operate a new Crown Center.
Thank you.
And unless, Madam Mayor, there's any specific question?
There is a question. Alderman Rainey?
No, Madam Mayor, I'm wondering, is it appropriate this time to make a motion?
This is for action, is it not?
Right. I would like to move that we accept the recommendation of the interviewing committee and move forward with the next steps.
Second. Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Colleen. Alderman Burris.
I was just actually going to recommend that we add someone to the review committee. If we could possibly add Steve Griffin to the internal review committee. Currently, community development hasn't been on, and I think it might be good to do so.
Do you want to make that part of the motion?
No, sorry.
All right.
It's a suggestion.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. Alderman Rainey, did you have anything more? All right.
I thought the committee did a great job, and their recommendations make perfect sense and seem like a logical next step.
I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, the next item under Special Order of Business is a discussion regarding some properties that the city has on Oakton Street, specifically the 2200 and 2300 block. We have a map, which I'd like to put up to kind of provide some perspective and help perhaps explain why this is before you this evening. And I don't know if we can zoom in just a little bit on the map, but I know that you are all, maybe you can just go over a little bit to the west so we can see, or zoom out just a little bit more. But certainly, the council, why don't we go back then to the original? One more, perfect. Are familiar with the general overview of James Park there in the center of the screen, the Levy Center on the lower right-hand corner. There's a large empty lot there, and if we could maybe just highlight the empty lot across from the Steak and Shake, that is known as the 2424. Let me just maybe just leave the image as is. The 2424 parcel there. Suzette, why don't you get up in this point? We'll go old school. Thank you, Carol Merrill.
Thank you.
Vanna White. The 2424 Oakton area is a parcel that is under active development, and as you look at that parcel, next to it is an existing city property, the Evanston Animal Shelter. Next to that is the former Evanston Recycling Center. On that site, there is building, some blacktop area, and there's also a compost area adjacent to that, which is used for the city's purposes. Immediately behind that is a community garden, and then as you move further east along the south side of Oakton, you go into the James Park area, again, that you're all familiar with. The issue of the recycling center is an issue that has been before the council in the past. In 2007, there was a report presented to the city council about potential uses for the recycling center, using the buildings as is, leveling the buildings, expanding the footprint of those buildings. And that is a discussion that was largely put off at the time because the facility was not yet decommissioned. And as the council is aware, over the last 12 months, we have closed the recycling center. We have freed up its main storage responsibilities, although there still is quite a bit of storage there. But that parcel is now ready for direction from the council for reuse opportunities. Next to that, in between the 2424 parcel and the recycling center, is the Evanston Animal Shelter, and that is a facility that we partner with the group CARE. It is the base of operation for our animal control operations as well as serves as an animal shelter. The city and CARE have entered into agreements in recent years to move forward with expansion renovations of that site. CARE has raised a substantial amount of money. The city has committed similar dollars to support the renovation of that site. Then have the 2424 parcel, again, which is under active development. To the south of that is a PACE bus maintenance operation. Staff and Alderman Rainey recently met with officials from PACE at that facility. They have no plans to change the use there. And then you see the items that are noted, United Storage, Dunkin' Donuts, that's also a Shell station, and that is a new development. So when you look, and that's a great, that's a great shot there, kind of giving you a whole overview. There's some interesting opportunities, I think, that present itself along the south side of Oakton there. And I wanted to come to the council because there have certainly been discussions at the council and in the community about some potential options. As I mentioned, back in 2007, the council looked at options for the recycling center site. I think it would be appropriate for the council to provide some direction to staff to see if it makes sense at this point to begin a more open dialogue, either with a subcommittee of the council or any other configuration the council would think appropriate, to actively move forward with those discussions. Part of the 2007 report mentioned the location of the animal shelter, and certainly you can see it is immediately adjacent. Two parcels for development and reconfiguration redevelopment are bigger than one parcel. And as we are getting ready to move forward in a very active way with CARE on the plans for the animal shelter, I thought it was appropriate for the council to reconfirm those plans in discussions specifically with Alderman Rainey. I think she, as always, looks very big picture on these issues and thought perhaps there may be other more expansive options for us to explore as far as the animal shelter is concerned. So the issue before you tonight is to receive some direction, or at least beginning steps of some direction, as to what the council would like to do moving forward with these parcels. A very attractive part of town with the successful retail across the street on the north side of Oakton, the successful community recreation with James Park, with the community garden to the south, the stability that's there with the PACE use. We're looking, I think, hopefully, very soon at some plans for the 2424 Oakton site, and then the Dunkin' Donuts Shell area, which is about now a year in place there. So Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I thought, again, this is a special order of business because it really touches so many different pieces of what we do and thought it was appropriate at this point to ask the council for some further direction. So I'd be happy and staff to answer any questions that you may have.
Alderman Burris?
I think that when we start talking about this, we need to talk about it as an economic development piece of it and activating that area. Currently, during the summer, James Park is very active, and you're drawing people to the businesses. But once the cold weather hits, this area is pretty much deactivated. So to have something on those sites that activates more traffic, I think, is important to look at. And I also think we also possibly need to look short-term as well as long-term. As Wally mentioned, Alderman Rainey is a master at looking long-term and visioning, and we need to look at that in the context of where are we now in the economy and where we will be later, and not necessarily saying that whatever we decide right now is the end-all, be-all, that we can possibly do things in two phases, something now and then something later.
Master Rainey?
Yeah, don't I wish. Well, when I look at James Park, all I can think of is the lakefront and how the people who live near the lakefront are treated so special when there are plans for the lakefront. And I want the people in the south end of town to be treated the same way when it comes to changing the use and determining uses of James Park. I know it's hard to think of James Park as being in the Eighth Ward because when you think of the Eighth Ward, you think of problems and foreclosures and Howard Street and things that I keep pounding the table on having to do with improvements. So when you look at this little piece of property, you've got an enormous constituency of people who take care of animals in this community and surrounding communities. We have a reputation for being probably the best there is in a shelter of this kind. The number of volunteers there match volunteers in any other organization in the city. And they, believe me, they have some pretty dirty work to do in addition to just being there. Second of all, you have the community gardeners there. They have always played a major role in decision-making for this area of the park. I would like to begin, if we're going to start talking about short-term uses for anything, and believe me, if you want to think big picture, once you get a short-term use in any of these properties, you might as well be talking long-term because nothing's going to change there. We have, in my opinion, lost every opportunity for the 2420, what we've come to call the 2424 Oakton property, and that is the big vacant parcel there. There are users coming forth, not what I ever envisioned. I always envisioned that being family entertainment, which just goes to show you, you know, wishing will not make it true, and neither will hard work. So I think we've lost that. We never took control of it, we've lost it, and that saddens me. We just heard a presentation from three fabulous companies about establishing a real stronghold at Crown Center. I'm so excited by that, it's fabulous. One of the things that I don't want to see happen in this little corner of James Park is I do not want to see another exclusive use of indoor soccer, indoor this, indoor that, where people pay huge amounts of money to participate, and only a small part of the community can play those games. I could never enjoy any of that. Several Aldermen on the council could never participate in that because we're too old. But it isn't the vision that I've always had for James Park, and that is to be so inclusive that anybody can play. And by that, I mean, for example, the concerts in the summer are just fabulous. We had struggled to get them down there, and Doug Gaynor agreed to place them down there, and that's a fabulous use of that park, baseball, all the other things. But once you put, and the reason I'm going in this direction is, of course, I've received a call saying that, you know, there's a big plan for the reuse of the recycling center, and that is for indoor soccer and indoor sports. And, you know, that, to me, has got to be something that the whole community wants, and I think it's a very small portion. I know there are very wonderful middle-class families who, you know, subsidize children who can't otherwise afford it, but it's such a small number that I hope that we open up and not do any short-term uses there and really, really look if we're going to, if we're going to let go of the recycling center, it has to be for something really special. And I think the CARE people need to be involved in this. I mean, we've talked to them, yes, we have talked to them. They said, you know, show us something, tell us, you know, we're open. But we've never gone to them and told them anything or shown them anything else. So as far as they're concerned, they're raising money to expand that location. And just getting to that point took us several years. So I think this is something that this council should not be directing at this point in time. It should be opened up to the community so that people get to say what they would like to see there. I mean, who knows? Somebody might want to see a restaurant there. I don't know that. I mean, I don't know. Somebody might want to see a bowling alley like I want to see there. I don't know, maybe not. But I don't think that this council ought to direct what's going to happen there at this point in time. I mean, look at the fight we had over a toilet over at the lakefront, my God! And we're going to start disrupting James Park for a use that nobody in the community has had a chance to talk about. I'm announcing right now that I'm going to hold a community meeting to talk about the plans for James Park.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, and I think a community meeting or a series of community meetings are a great idea. I don't think that we should write off indoor recreation opportunities, which I seem to be getting a sense that at least some of the council's suggesting. Indoor sports, I think, presents a great opportunity for not a small or a minority of the kids in Evanston, but thousands of kids participate in youth sports in Evanston, and these are huge numbers. And those opportunities in a northern part of the country that we're living in are very, very limited in the wintertime. We have basketball and other activities, but as we've seen from the Crown proposal, I think we have a realistic possibility of getting other indoor recreational facilities that can appeal to a broad base of both kids and adults. I know that there are adults that are interested in playing indoor sports, and I have children that are of this age, and we drive up to Highland Park, and kids drive to Palatine, and people go to Best Plains. People go very long distances to participate in these activities, and I think if it was closer to home, the cost of doing that wouldn't limit the participation as much as it has to be limited. to be limited. If a kid can't get to Highland Park, they can't participate. If it's in the hometown, that creates an opportunity that otherwise wasn't going to be there. So I think it's very, very important to keep an open mind. I think that as far as the animal shelter is concerned, whatever the vision is and whatever the plan is, should include either the expansion of or the creation of a first-class facility. And I think that's an important component of this area. I don't think it should be moved somewhere else, but I think it should be included in the overall vision and the overall plan. We've got a good bit of space there. I know that there are groups that are interested in the larger parcel there for a larger-scale indoor recreation facility, perhaps something along the lines of occupying the, what's it called? The, no, 24, south of the animal shelter, the...
Community garden?
No, not the community garden, the compost. Compost was the word I was looking for, for non-compost purposes. So there are a number of people and organizations that are interested in doing something there. So I think it would be important to open it up to everyone, and to see what people are interested in doing, and see how people can collaborate to come up with something that can be inclusive and can include more of the members of the community. And I think that we should not, absolutely should not, write off indoor sports or recreation facilities. I think that that could be a very strong and helpful component for a participation perspective and for an economic development perspective. As Alderman Burris suggested, in the summertime, we have a lot of kids there doing different activities, but in the wintertime, people are holed up in their homes, because it's cold. But if we had hundreds or hundreds of thousands of people coming through that area in the winter as well, I think that would help the economic development of the area.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, just looking at the site plan, indoor recreation makes a lot of sense to me, but I'm more concerned about our discussing this without hearing from people who may have come to speak to the council. And I'm just wondering, Madam Mayor, has there anyone signed up for citizen comment who wanted to speak to this issue specifically?
Well, they seem to be signed up to speak to the recycling center, but I assume that also is this, so the answer is yes.
Okay. I see folks from the animal shelter out there, and of course, I'm very concerned that, over the years, the amount of money they've raised has been significant, and I want to make sure that they're participating in the process. So, again, we do end up with a high-class facility, because they certainly have dedicated so many hours and so much time, all of them volunteers, that we do need to be doing better than we are with our facility right now.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have just a couple of questions. I presume and assume that the recycling center now is really simply used for storage, that's its only function.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think, like any big family who are always looking for space, and my understanding is we've got a whole variety of different things there, both inside the facility and outside the facility.
And what is the status of the ownership of 2424 Oakton?
That is a parcel that's in active development.
I think, Mr. Bobkowitz, you suggested at the outset that this may be appropriate for a subcommittee to look into, and perhaps convene those community meetings, Alderman Rainey, and Alderman Wilson, that you're both interested in.
Certainly, I have no predisposition as to process. I think in the past, certainly, this council has done that, has created committees either of the council, or have looked to combine council with interested residents, and then go from that point.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Mayor Tisdale. Just a couple of questions, just questioning the current status, particularly with the animal shelter. It seems to me, and I'm not suggesting moving it from this area, but wondering if it really warrants being on a commercial street that could be more attractive for attracting other development, pushing it a little to the side or somewhere else. It could be easily accessible, but still, I think that street front on Oakton could be very, very attractive to a commercial developer for a business. And I also like, have we ever talked to Skokie? I mean, I know they use this facility, some do, but have they been considered a partner in this at any time?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Tendem, I have spoken to the village manager of Skokie, Mr. Rigoni, about this in a very preliminary manner, and he has expressed preliminary interest.
Does preliminary interest mean money?
We did not speak of money. I often try to convince my dear friend in Skokie of projects that we could do jointly, most of which he politely declines. This is one he has not politely declined. So I think that there's an opportunity for additional discussions with the village of Skokie.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What do we know about Skokie's intentions for its property, or the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District property that it leases, that Skokie leases at McCormick in Oakton, in the southwest corner?
In my limited discussions with Mr. Rigoni, I think they share our general concern about property that is on the water reclamation district land, that there is a tentative nature of that, and that certainly, if you can find uses on other property that lack that tentative nature, where the reclamation district could ask for that property back for their own purposes, that's sort of positive. But again, I really want to stress that the discussions with the village of Skokie have been very preliminary, and I think that's another element of this larger discussion, that if the council is serious to talk, I think there are opportunities to discuss this further with the village of Skokie, just given the proximity and the needs that they have.
Seeing no further lights, this is for discussion only. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I would move that we set up a subcommittee to further explore ideas, to talk to various constituent groups that may have an interest, and certainly to, you know, participate and hear the concerns of the constituents who live in the immediate neighborhood. Because I think, you know, at this kind of, in this form, it's very limiting to get into, to probe, to bring people through, to have some discussions. And I would love to hear what our experts in recreation are thinking, you know, beyond whatever ideas we may put on the table. But I think it's at a different time, a different place. Although, you know, we might want to hear some of the public comments of those who signed up, I think a subcommittee is appropriate to do a more long-term, in-depth kind of analysis and discussion.
Alderman Grover?
As well as a recreation interest, I also don't want to lose what Colleen Burris suggested, which was the economic development potential of whatever happens to this property here.
That's true.
And so including some kind of expertise, either from staff or from the community, as to the economic development angle here.
That's true.
Alderman Burris?
I'd actually follow up on both of your questions, and I know it's Alderman Wilson and Alderman Jean Baptiste, and I've been on the Robert Crown Committee, and one of the things that we've asked of the teams that came before us were, what do you project as your economic development piece of building such a venue? How will that affect the surrounding communities? And that's very, it wasn't, it's just not about recreation, it's about what can that recreation piece draw to that community right at Dodge and Dempster? And I think that needs to be a key component of this, as both Alderman Grover and Alderman Jean Baptiste said, because this is a huge economic area that we need to not lose sight of. And I'm glad that the village of Skokie is willing to talk to us about the animal shelter. I also think that that's an area where, if we can partner with another entity, it'll be better for the care folks, that you have more of an impact, hopefully more money as well, which would be exciting, and more of an opportunity to do fundraising as well if you're broadening the community. So hopefully, that's an exciting opportunity that you're looking at as well.
Thank you. So Alderman Jean Baptiste, would you restate your motion?
Well, I move that we set up a subcommittee to take in, to look into the economic development potential of this site, the adult recreation potential of this site, as well as youth recreation potential of the site.
Is there, it's been moved and seconded, Alderman Rainey?
One of the things that's occurred to me lately, as we discuss within our own wards and with one another, economic development potentials. One of the things that we rarely do at the Economic Development Committee is discuss economic development projects that are in the works, or that are in somebody's mind's eye, or concepts. We never do that at that committee. For example, all of the activity that's going on over at 2424 Oakton, that's never discussed there. This whole concept of these two parcels, not discussed there. We have other committees, advisory committees, where these kinds of issues are brought and they're discussed and, you know, bantered about, and then they come here for further discussion. I think that the development of these parcels should go to the Economic Development Committee. At the same time, those of us who are interested, especially me, developing community meetings regarding this. So that's, I think, better than forming a subcommittee right now, that we should send it to the Economic Development Committee, because it is an economic development opportunity. It might be, and hopefully it will be, a taxable project, where whatever goes there will be on the tax rolls. Doesn't make any sense to put another nontaxable matter there. Further, the issue of it only being a storage facility, I remember paying the bills, something like $4,000 a month, for the warehouse that we emptied out to put the stuff in this location. So, you know, the recycling center being only a storage facility is a financial issue for the city. It does provide us with a place to put large, heavy equipment.
All right, seeing no further lights, Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Well, I do think that the Economic Development Committee ought to weigh in on this discussion, and I think it's just a product of what had been on our list of priorities, that's why we've not talking about economic, we've not spoken about economic development projects, because we used to do that, Sherman Plaza and various other, you know, initiatives. I mean, we were embroiled in a lot of that before. So I don't mind that being on the agenda of the Economic Development Committee, it should be. However, we are talking about recreation, adult recreation. It's all interconnected, but I think a subcommittee that can begin to study, bring in some of the interest groups that have ideas, look closer and deeper at the question, the possibility of relocating the shelter or not, you know, you need focused attention to that. And I think that the Economic Development Committee can put this on its agenda, can advise, can set a direction, call for economic development component to be strongly intertwined, but I don't think you can really get into this discussion at that level strictly focused on all aspects of this kind of project. Because we're talking about three components: adult recreation, youth recreation, economic development, and making sure that there's a synergy in all of that. So, but it's just a question of how do we proceed? And I think that, you know, it's up for discussion, is my opinion as to how we move forward.
Alderman Rainey?
The problem I'm having with all of this is that we have discounted every other use other than indoor recreation. And that I really object to.
No, 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 no.
Well, it sounded like you were talking about, you said, "We need," well, then restate it.
Yeah, it's a very broad kind of, this...
Indoor recreation is...
We've been talking about indoor recreation, we've been talking about adult recreation, we've been talking about economic development in this city. We talk about economic development as part of our general work.
But I'm not talking...
But with regard to adult recreation, we have talked about this, but we've really not focused on trying to find a way to make that happen. We've also spoken about indoor recreation, different ones of us, different groups in the city. So I'm suggesting that we have a subcommittee that can begin to look into all of those components, integrate all of those ideas, have the necessary standing committees that deal with economic development, that deal with recreation, that deal with other components, weigh in, and bring those ideas together, but in a subcommittee process. That's all I'm talking about. How we, I think, you know, all of the ideas have been put on the table already. No one can discount economic development in this initiative, nor should we discount adult recreation and indoor recreation. We need to integrate all of those ideas and weigh in and try to, I mean, we've been at the Robert Crown Project forever, and I think that we're sort of gelling as to what we want to do now. We ought to take all of the suggestions, all of the ideas, and try to pull them together into a proposal ultimately for what we do with this particular site. So it's not one as opposed to the other, it's all together.
Okay, I would remind you all, it's 10 o'clock at night, we haven't had citizen comment yet, and we're discussing how to discuss a topic. But next I have Alderman Grover, then Alderman Burris, and Alderman Rainey, and maybe we could wrap this up and agree on a way to further discuss it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think what Alderman Jean Baptiste is getting to, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just a subcommittee that would focus on this particular area of Evanston, this crown jewel of Evanston's southwest, and James Park and the Levy Center, this is an important part of that, it's deserving of some focus and expertise. And economic development would be part of it, recreation would be part of it, who knows once we open it up for community input, what else would be part of that discussion? But to put it in one home, one committee, to have that discussion would be useful.
Alderman Rainey?
Weren't you next? You called Alderman Burris next.
Sorry, thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Actually, it's similar to what Alderman Grover said. And I want to be clear, when we're talking about a subcommittee for the site, I think where the disconnect comes with Alderman Jean Baptiste, I agree we need a subcommittee, but I'm not sure that it's, we may need a subcommittee on adult recreation and indoor use as a separate overall looking for Evanston, but to link it to this site, that's, I think, the part that becomes almost preconceived, that that's what it's going to be here. And that's where we need to see an economic development committee for this site, to say, "What do we want here?" and open it up to the community, as well as a recreation committee to say, "Is this the site for it, or is it somewhere else, or where else do we need adult recreation?" So not to limit this for the economic development. There could be other proposals. I know we have folks here that have a proposal that they want to put there, but it may not be the best thing to put there, and I just don't want that preconceived notion to come into the subcommittee. It's that, am I making, so I'm not disagreeing with you, I just think that we're trying to cram two things that maybe shouldn't necessarily be together in one subcommittee. It made sense.
Alderman Rainey?
It sounds as though the plan is in place for indoor recreation at that location. What I want to know is, where is the subcommittee for those of us who have other ideas, or who want to flush out other ideas, that have absolutely nothing to do with indoor recreation? This is preconceived, and it doesn't feel good to me as the alderman of the ward, and, you know, I've been told that, oh, we have all our plans in place for this location, we want the city to partner with us, you know. Is the building for sale? I don't know. If we get rid of that building, it is my understanding that, don't we have to put it out for a public bid? I don't know. But I don't want a precon... I don't want a preconceived plan to discuss what kind of adult recreation, juvenile recreation, youth recreation, that's going to go in that building. First of all, I don't think the city can afford it, and second of all, we've got one plan on the books, basically a mile from this location, that we just heard presentations on tonight. How much do we need? And they're pretty much the same people going back and forth between one organization and the other. So, I, I don't like the idea of the subcommittee to study indoor recreation at this location.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we have a subcommittee. So, let's take a vote on the subcommittee first and see how that goes. Alderman Burris.
Subcommittee on what?
No, that's not what he said.
I just want to be clear what we're voting on.
We're voting on --
Use of the site.
Use of the site.
Use of the site.
No, that, that's --
Use of the site. We heard three main currents.
Eliminate all references to indoor recreation.
Are you one?
I mean, eliminating all --
References to indoor recreation?
No, I am not. I am not. I mean, you may know something that I don't know, but the reality is this discussion has dealt with economic development, adult recreation, and indoor recreation. And adult recreation may be indoor as well. It may be youth recreation, indoor, maybe adult and youth recreation. So, I mean, it's just a subcommittee to begin to talk about this. It's not a fait accompli. All right?
Alderman Wilson? I'm sorry, Alderman Jean Baptiste, are you done? Okay.
I guess I don't get it. We're all talking about the same thing. Something's going to go there. The subcommittee is to determine what the best use and what people want to have there. So, let's just, let's move along. I've heard suggestions from, somebody was interested in putting a fire restoration company there and leasing the space. I've heard a number of recreation ideas. I've heard lots of ideas. My impression is whatever the subcommittee is going to be doing is going to be open-minded and looking at all of the opportunities. So, I don't think we need any references to anything. I think the, the idea here is to, is to be open-minded and see what people want.
Moving right along, it's been moved that we have a subcommittee to discuss use, look at uses of the site. It's been seconded. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
All right, I believe there were two opposed, and the ayes have it. City Manager, third quarter financial report at 5 after 10.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're going to skip to the good part. What I would propose we do is, I will let you read at your leisure slides one through eight, which talk about where we are with the third quarter, which is good but not great. So, I would rather focus your attention this evening and get any questions and comments you have on the real meat of the issue, and that is, our fiscal year ends for the final time on February 28, 2011. Before we move to a new fiscal year, where are we going to be at the end of the year, good, bad, indifferent, and what can we do if it's bad? Because I'll steal, I'll steal the lead, and that is that it's not great.
Excuse me, before Kara leaves, we will take public comment next. Okay, deserting us anyway. All right.
Maybe not.
Okay, sorry.
So, I'll ask Mrs. Earl, our Mr. Services Director, to start right there on slide nine.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Manager Bob Quitz and Clerk Green. As you can see from slide nine, we are projecting today a year-end estimate of a deficit of just almost $1.5 million. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the revenue and expense projections on how we're coming up with the $1.5 million deficit. The first item on this revenue slide is property tax, and you can see that we have a blank for the month of February, and this is something that is significant. The reason for that is our property tax collections are estimated at about $16.5 million for the year, and we are estimating about $14.7. It doesn't mean that we're not going to get the full amount. What it means is that we have an accounting issue with when we book that, about $1.5 million. Because we've had property taxes delayed, there's a possibility that the first quarter installment next year will be delayed. If that happens, there won't be any early bird payments in February. And the amount that we're looking at is about $1.5 million. When we complete the audit, there's a possibility that the funds will get booked back into the prior fiscal year, but the challenge that comes up is where does the cash go? If we hold and put it into the new fiscal year, that will put us in better, in better shape as we go into the 10-month. So, we're going to have to watch this. We're going to have to watch what's happening with the first quarter installment, and we can report back to you on it. But that's why there's a blank there. It's not that no money will be collected in February, it's just where we, where we account for the money. A couple other things there. The sales tax is trending ahead, which is a good thing. Our utility tax is, is flat. It's, it's close. It's actually a little bit under what we are projecting. Our vehicle licenses, you can see there, we're still projecting to collect about $1,200,000 by the end of the year. And the reason for that is, as you know, a lot of our revenue doesn't come in on a monthly basis. Sometimes it comes in at different points during the year, and our sticker sales have just ended, and we expect that we'll receive a large portion of the revenue between now and the end of the fiscal year. The last item there is permits. We're looking at that. We're ahead of schedule with that revenue, and we will be continuing to watch it to see where we end the fiscal year. On the final revenues there, the athletic tax that we expect to collect in February again could come in better than the $450,000 projection, but right now that's a projection based on prior fiscal years. And then, the one revenue that I want to talk about that is off pretty significantly for this year is the yard waste fee. We projected a $950,000 revenue, and to date we've collected $150,000. So, that, that is off. Our cart fees are a little higher than originally projected, but that has to do with the timing of the contract, the fact that we didn't, we weren't able to implement the program at the beginning of the season. And we did lower the revenue projection for next year because we knew that this one was going to be off. On the expenditure side in the general fund, we are trending right up, a little bit lower than where we would be at, at 10 months. At 10 months, we would be 83% expended, and we're just at about 80%, which is a good thing. This is going to offset the fact that the revenue is not going to come into the level we originally projected. As you can see, most of the departments are under budget. Everyone has done a really good job withholding the line. The city manager has put several measures in place throughout the year in order to keep the expenditures curtailed, such as a hiring freeze, such as approving all expenditures over $1,000, such as approving any out-of-state travel and only using any type of training on a limited basis in order to keep those expenditures down. If you look at police and fire, one thing I want to point out is even though they look like they're at budget, there is a reason for that, and it has to do with some of the payouts that we had on the salary side. As you know, we had several retirements of some long-term employees, and right now that amount of money is showing in their salary line item. But as you can see, they're right on budget, and, and the reason for that is because they've been holding positions, they haven't been filling positions, and we are achieving some vacancy savings. So, the bottom line here is that we're expecting that the expenditures will come in under budget and that the departments have been working diligently to curtail their expenditures throughout the year. So, the highlights for the year end is the receipts, our state income tax, while we're, we're booking it as a receivable, and it's coming in on trend, it's still six months behind. What that means is we're owed $2.7 million by the state.
What was that?
What it means is we're owed $2.7 million from the state.
By who?
State of Illinois for income tax. We're booking it as a receivable. We expect to receive it. We haven't heard any word that this revenue source is going to be changing or declining, but we are still watching that. The enterprise funds, they are coming on the revenue side lower than expected, and there's reasons for that in all three funds, and they're all being basically offset on the expenses side. On the water fund, we were going to borrow for some water projects. Those are not going to happen. So, the revenues are off by about $3.5 million, which is offset by the delay in some capital projects. On the sewer fund, the revenue is off because of consumption. As you know, on the sewer side, it's only in Evanston. However, that is being offset a little bit because some of the capital improvements are not going to be continued for this year. So, that should come in on target. On the parking side, the revenues are off as well, but the only reason why that is happening is because we haven't done an inter-fund transfer from one of the TIFs, and once that happens, it will come in close to budget. One other thing I want to mention about parking on the expense side is that one of the contracts, it's a CPS, came in at about $100,000 less than what we projected. Also, the lights that have been installed at the Maple Street garage have yielded about a $40,000 savings in energy efficiency costs. So, in the parking fund, our, our expenses are down, and those are two of the reasons why. And that amounts to, close to $150,000 for those two items. Again, on, on the expenditure side, the, most budgets are below target in all of the departments. Payroll and overtime is below target. We do have one unknown, and that's the weather right now. I talked to the Director of Public Works again today, and she's still on, on track to not overspend in snow and ice, but we just don't know what will happen weather-wise. So, we, hopefully, we won't go over, but we'll continue to watch that. The last item on that part of the slide has to do with the insurance fund. As you know, we've been working pretty diligently to get a lot of our insurance costs under control. We're at a deficit situation right now at the end of the third quarter. We are also looking at our fund balance to see what we're charging to that right now as far as projected costs, and we need to do some more analysis here. We know that that deficit number will come down. We have a subrogation amount in the amount of about $150,000, and we're waiting for the check, and we're hopefully going to get it before the end of the fiscal year. So, there will be more to come on that, but as we did with the CIP fund, we are going to do some more significant analysis with the insurance fund before the end of the year. The summary for the year end on the revenue side, again, taking in the $1.5 million issue with the property tax delay possibly, is, we're projecting a little over $84 million. And on the expenditure side in the general fund, we're projecting $85,800,000. And as you can see on, on the expenditures, we have five more payrolls to book at the average of about $2.5 million, and five bills lists average about $1 million. And the payroll does include some of the items that you do not see, which relates to, I'm not sure if it's IMRF and FICA, but, but there are other things that are included in the payroll figures that, that usually you see about between $2 million and $2.1 million, but in actuality, it's a little bit higher than that every pay period. And again, on the other funds, as I said, with the parking and water funds, one reason why the parking fund is down is because of the inter-fund transfer, and on the water fund, it's, it's because we didn't borrow some of the money that we anticipated borrowing. Again, that's offset by the fact that we are not doing some of the capital projects. In the sewer fund, the revenues will be slightly below budget. Again, that's related to consumption, and that will be offset by the fact that some of the capital projects will not be completed. And then I did highlight the expense side as well. Also, we don't, we do have some delays in paying some of the invoices, so when all of that happens, if you look on one of the earlier slides, you'll see that the expenses are fairly low, but when we pay all of those bills, we should come in on target when we look at both the revenue and expend, expense side in the enterprise funds. So, in summary, in the general fund, we're estimating possibly a $1.5 million deficit. The revenue expenses will come in close to target or below target in the enterprise funds. And some of the solutions that we've preliminarily thought about to address the deficit relate to continuing to analyze all of our receipts. The good news is that a lot of our revenues are trending better than they did last year at this time. Some of the highlights are the sales tax, the real estate transfer. We actually gave some figures to Alderman Burris the other day. It's about 102% collected right now, and permit revenue. So, we're hoping that those will come in a little better than projected. Also, we could look at transfers from other funds, whether it be economic development TIFs or the compensated absences, absences fund. And the last area that we would obviously hold till the end would be considering the use of fund balance. As you can see, our fund balance as we started the fiscal year was a little over $13 million. Our current budget policy requires that we keep 10 to 12% available, and I put the figure there. It would range between 8.7 and 10.5 million. So, there is a little wiggle room there if, if you so choose to go there, if we did in fact have a deficit at year end. And that's my fast version.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in summary, it's, it's okay. It's not great. I think as Mrs. Earl has mentioned, we have tools at our disposal over the next five weeks to manage through portions of this. I think we want to be as conservative as possible because quite honestly, with the timing of receipts from the state of Illinois, we just cannot guarantee when we'll know what we know for monies that come through the state. So, rather than making an uneducated guess, we would rather just be a little bit more cautious. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no lights, we could move along to, there's a light. Alderman Rainey.
What is the state's obligation to send back to the city income tax revenue? Is, is it a statute?
Up until the legislature changed the income tax with their actions, there, there remains a fixed amount that the local governments are entitled to. There, I think, is also a obligation to pay that money within a certain time period, which the state has not been doing for a year and a half or so. But money has come in in dribs and drabs. We understand that part of the solution with the income tax increase will allow the state to bond for money to help them pay their bills. So, we hope that we will see our portion of that in a catch-up with the income tax. I don't believe we have heard from the Illinois Municipal League or any of our financial advisors of any kind of timing for that. So, we would book this all as a receivable, Alderman Rainey, but I think the question just is trying to get a good number of what that receivable ultimately would be.
Seeing no further lights, the next item is citizen comment. I apologize for the hour. The first four speakers, I'll call your names, and please wait by the podium for your turn. Each speaker has three minutes, and please give your name and address. Steve Brown, Mike Hayman, David Campbell, and Greg Clark.
I'm gonna, Steve Brown, 2202 McDaniel, and I'm gonna yield my time to Dave Campbell.
Mike Hayman, 2514 Sheridan, I'm gonna do the same.
Okay.
I'm David Campbell of 2016 Harrison. I'm also the co-president of Evanston Baseball and Softball Association, and stand here before you today representing thousands of Evanston adults and youth who are involved in activities around the, around the city. We're gonna keep it this very short because we're here, I'm here to kind of give you one option for the recycling center. I'd like to submit to the, to the public records ideas that we have put together, and very quickly would really like to talk to you about an idea we have, which is charged with economic development, which improves the crown jewel of Evanston's parks, and really provides many alternatives for, for youth and adults as, in terms of indoor sports facilities. This is something that would be very innovative as a joint venture between This is something that would be very innovative as a joint venture between the citizens of Evanston, as well as the city government of Evanston, that would come together at no cost to the city to provide recreation activities and camp activities and, you know, physical space to do these types of things. When we talk about this, we talk about organizations funding the entire cost on our own, sharing it with the city, sharing it with not just youth sports, but adult sports as well, and we think that that's something that's severely needed within the city. In our proposal, you'll notice that we don't talk about tearing down the building. We don't talk about moving the structure. We talk about improving it, talking about adding the recycling center to be a part of James Park, and really driving the traffic through there as Alderman Burris said, in the winter. Right now, we have funds that leave Evanston every single day and are spent in Skokie and are spent in Willmette. Those are dollars that could be spent right here and serve as economic engines for the south end of Evanston. So, with that, I will, you know, we've clearly debated this a lot today. We look forward to being part of the subcommittee and offering our input to this, and really want to have you just be aware of what we are thinking and one idea that the community has put together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is, oh, Alderman Burris.
Did you? Okay to ask a question?
Go ahead.
It's, hi, can I ask you a question? Other facilities that are similar to this, and I apologize, because I just got this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could, are there numbers in here about how much revenue they produce, what kind of foot traffic they produce as well? I think it's really key, and part of why I, you know, voted against doing a subcommittee that was just focusing on adult recreation, because I think we need to look broadly. But in order to make this viable, it has to be very focused on economic development. So, if we have information from other places.
We do. We did not, we did not put that in there. We have talked to people who run similar facilities. We have, you know, budgetary items. We know what their traffic is. Some of that is somewhat proprietary to those business owners, and for that reason, we didn't include it here. But in a subcommittee setting where we can protect somebody's, you know, business, if you will, we are absolutely able to provide that. And based on, you know, our knowledge from that, I mean, we, obviously, this has to be economically feasible, not just for an operator, for example, if we were to have a third-party operator come in, but economically feasible for the community. We think that it meets those requirements.
Thanks, I appreciate you.
Next, Todd Keem, Larry Raffel, Randall Maine.
Todd Keem, 1126 Grant. I'm going to give my time up. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Larry Raffel at 3509 Central Street in Evanston, and I'm also a member of the Playground and Recreation Board, and I'm here on behalf of that board to speak to the city council. The affiliation came before our board last Thursday with this same proposal, and after a really terrific discussion with them, we passed a resolution endorsing this proposal. And I'd like to, it's one sentence long, I'd just like to read it to you. The Playground and Recreation Board endorses the Evanston Recycling Center proposal, presented on Thursday, January 20, 2011, by the Evanston Baseball and Softball Association, and encourages the city council to direct staff to work with the consortium of youth sports organizations to develop a detailed plan of action to implement this proposal, recognizing that the proposal is in its very preliminary stages. One of the reasons, well, I shouldn't say one, but there are several reasons why we endorse this proposal and think very highly of it. The first is that it provides a valuable amenity to our athletic affiliates. But not only our athletic affiliates, it also provides a valuable amenity to our recreation program, as you read through their proposal, you'll see. And that's a very, very much-needed facility to our recreation programs. In addition, it utilizes an existing facility, and in these economic times, you can't afford not to do that. It's just smart planning to use what you've already have built. It also, because the proposal utilizes an outside operator to provide the management of the proposed facility, it really brings in an expertise without straining our staff. And as you know, you know, we're strained. We can use the outside assistance, and these operators bring in a wealth of knowledge on managing. In fact, we even heard it today when, with some of the proposals, or some of the teams for the Crown Center. The other thing is, I think was just previously mentioned, is that this facility, as a indoor recreational facility, provides an excellent tie-in with James Park, you know, with our, really, our jewel of an athletic complex. This is a excellent tie-in from a site planning standpoint. So, you know, from, just from a physical standpoint, it also provides an excellent tie. However, most importantly, we really feel it's a win-win for the community and the city as well, and we need to encourage these types of partnerships with affiliates and organizations that benefit the residents of Evanston. And for that reason and all the other reasons, the board has endorsed this proposal in its conceptual form. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Randall Maine. I'm of 321 Lake Street in Evanston, and I come here wearing two hats. I too am a member of the Playground and Recreation Board, and I was certainly among those emphatically behind the endorsement that our, that our board sent up to you guys for this to consider. I also wear another hat as a head of a, not baseball, but of another local affiliated sports organization, and that is one of the reasons why I like this particular proposal is because it is not about just one of the affiliated sports organizations. In this case, it's four youth organizations, but this program or this proposal is not just about the use of that facility for youth sports, it's also for adult sports as well. But I was particularly excited to see that it was a, just that, a consortium, and I thought, an extraordinary cooperation of four groups, which I think actually would probably become five in very short order. As a parent of three youth sports participants, I have taken kids, as Alderman Wilson mentioned, I've taken kids to faraway places for indoor sports and outdoor sports, to faraway turf fields on an outdoor basis, to Libertyville, to Darien, to Schaumburg, to, it goes on, it goes on. And that's money that does get spent elsewhere, both in program fees and in money spent at the businesses right nearby those places when you're leaving. For example, the Steak 'n Shake would benefit from people leaving. After they've had their kids just get through playing, they'll go across and spend money there. So, I think that's an important point, that to me, indoor recreation in this location, perfectly adjacent to our crown jewel outdoor location, is in fact economic development. The passions of these leaders, the leaders for these organizations is for our kids, and we're coming together with that. Two, 2,500-plus families are represented among these four groups. Maybe some overlap, but that's a pretty large contingent of families, and that's families, right? Times kids, times parents, times participation. The facility is for all those, and obviously, that's not a contingent that should be short-changed in that regard. Our town in general is better for having better sports facilities. Neighboring towns are working towards this same effort as well. Neighboring, faraway towns have these facilities that we take our kids to. Wouldn't we rather have people come to our town and bring their kids to our town in that regard? I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, mayor. I'm Gail Lovinger, 2225 Simpson Street in Evanston. I am a volunteer with the Community Animal Rescue Effort, and I'm also on the board of the Community Animal Rescue Effort. The animal shelter is 2310 Oakden. There is one thing very, very special about that site, and that's, it's the animal shelter, and that's what's there. The shelter, the animal runs, the sheds, and the other facilities there for the animals. Other than that, we aren't tied to that site if the city of Evanston believes there's a better use for that site. We are open to the idea of moving the shelter if that's in the best interests of the city of Evanston, or we are quite happy to stay where we are, which has been our home since 1987, and we can stay there and continue working out of there as long as it's an expanded shelter. We have four issues that we would want to have taken into consideration. First, if the decision is going to be made that the shelter should be moved, at the same time, there should be identification of a definite new location for the shelter. The decision to move the shelter should come with the decision for a new location, not where the shelter is kind of gone and then we're hunting for space for it for several years. Second, the cost for building an entire new shelter are gonna be substantially higher than just doing an add-on and a renovation for the shelter. At this point, we had already figured that CARE would be bearing the brunt of 66% to 75% of the total cost for an expansion and a renovation. If we're going to start from scratch, we would want whatever development proposal there is to provide for making whole the city and CARE in terms of the value of that land and the value of the property that's there, so that we can invest that and not have to start from scratch with our funding. Third, if we are going to move the shelter, we love the fact that the city manager has already started talking with Skokie, but there, while Skokie may be the only viable suburb as a full partner or as more of a capital partner in the shelter, there are many surrounding communities that are struggling to know what to do with their stray cats and dogs, and their community residents are saying, "We need someplace for strays to go." And there are contract opportunities that would bring revenue into the city if a new shelter is conceived with this kind of purpose in mind. In addition, if it's viewed as a community, more of a community resource, there are also revenue-generating possibilities that are there, things like boarding animals, doing doggy daycare, providing training and grooming, all of which are not possible at the current site. And the fourth issue, I would say, is, please, whatever you're going to do, as much as possible, expedite the solution. CARE has been working towards this expansion, feels like for most of my life at this point. Our volunteers and our supporters have heard so many times that this is really going to happen. We've had a lot of fits and starts. I think Doug Gaynor's getting sick of us, but we really need to do something. We are an organization that worked with the 2010 and 2012 Advancing Principles for Humane Care, and we do it in a facility that was built as a pound. It just doesn't work, and we would appreciate any help or thought that is given to this issue, and we would be delighted to participate in or work with any subcommittee looking at the issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, Alderman Burris, did you have another? Did I forget to turn your light off, or did you?
Thanks, I just wanted to say, thank you for being rational and thoughtful and looking at the bigger picture. I, it's so rare that we see that, and honestly, from the bottom of my heart, wow, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Rizki.
Before Mr. Vasilko left, he gave me his time. You can verify that with a staff member out there. I'm not gonna take it all, though. On the capital plan, I'm gonna talk about that briefly. The reason, no one really understands the problem with this capital plan, it's not like the police and fire pension funds that you can see the underfunding. I believe the city has wasted a lot of money on capital, and my guess would be at least 10% over the years has been just wasted. At AP&amp;W, I made a lot of points to this, and you can look at the minutes of how the city's managing its capital. It's really interesting, as we look at the budget now, that you're basically starting to cannibalize your capital to keep your budget in line. So, you're really not, I don't think you're managing your capital. But, and then I'm gonna move on to water quality. I thought it was interesting, you know, this presentation about water quality. I mean, the real issue here is really the 30% water bill increase I keep asking about. In your budget, you're looking tonight, your budget, water consumption's down. So, if you're gonna raise these things another 30%, what's gonna happen? And I mean, it's just ridiculous. And then, you know, that really goes up to another thing about, you know, raising your fees. You raised your fees, you had no fees on yard wage collection. You raised these fees, you didn't even collect anywhere close to your budget. I mean, your shortfall's almost $700,000. I mean, basically, if that goes against the Streets and Sanitation Department, what are you gonna do? I would suggest you better look at that Streets and Sanitation Department and look to privatize it, to fix it. But that's really, I think you've got problems. And these, you know, why should that come out of the reserves? I mean, you didn't, you didn't take any of that out of the reserves for the library so to keep them going. So, I mean, that's an issue. So, the other issue is at Robert Crown. I really don't understand this whole thing. You've got these three developers here. You're gonna spend $150,000. You don't have any, you haven't showed anyone any schematics of the money, how this is gonna be structured or anything. Makes very little sense. You're gonna capitalize this $150,000 of money and basically say it went against capital. But really, it's not capital, it's just another study upon study that we keep wasting money on. So, I'd like to just see some numbers from somebody in the city to tell me the feasibility of this project. I mean, there doesn't seem to be anything in anything that I saw that showed any feasibility. And to me, it doesn't look very feasible when your rec. department doesn't make that much money and revenue at Robert Crown, and basically, you're gonna build a building. So, it makes no sense. And finally, to upset the people at the animal shelter is ridiculous, because you have no capital anyway to do anything, so you're not gonna move the animal shelter, so why upset hundreds of people like you did with the library, all the people in the library? I mean, looking at things in your capital plan, you wanna spend half a million dollars on a foghouse, it's probably $1,000 a square foot. Does anyone really know how they're spending money here? It's very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Citizen Comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first, did we vote on the third-quarter financial report? Were we supposed to accept that?
Oh, no, we did not. Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
You want me to move?
I would do.
All right. Okay, that was, third-quarter financial report for fiscal year 2010-11 and FY 10-11 year-end estimate. Staff is recommending that we accept and place the third-quarter financial report on file, including the fiscal year-end estimate on file.
Been moved and seconded, all seeing no lights, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you very much, Alderman.
Next item is approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 10.
Take them off, please.
What?
Take the minutes off.
Take the minutes off. Oh, I beg your pardon. Ignore that last comment of mine. Under Administration and Public Works, the city of Evanston payroll through January 16 in the amount of $2,558,341.75. We ask your approval of the city of Evanston bills through January 25 in the amount of The Administration Public Works Committee requests your approval of a one-year contract extension for auto body and collision repair services in the amount of $56,000 for the year January 28, 2011 through December 31, 2011, to provide products and services for repair of both emergency and non-emergency vehicles. Also, for your approval is a one-year contract extension for emergency lighting and aftermarket equipment. This includes installation, removal, and repair of law enforcement and emergency fire response vehicles and equipment to HAVI Communications in the amount of $62,000 for January 28 through January 28 through December 31. Next, we ask your approval of a one-year renewal of elevator service agreement with ThyssenKrupp Elevator Corporation for the Sherman Plaza South Park. This is for $35,427.60. It is less than a 3% annual increase from last year's fee. We ask your approval also of a renewal of an elevator service agreement with Otis Elevator Corporation for the Civic Center Service Center, Maple Avenue and Church Street South Parks, with Otis Elevator Corporation, one-year term at a cost of $65,435.15. The agreement is for January 1 through December 31 of 2011, and the agreement provides also for a 3% annual increase from last year's fee. Next, approval is requested for extending the term of current auditors, Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus LLP for one year in the amount of $79,500, the same fee as for the 2009-2010 audit. Approval is also requested for change order three and change order four to the 2009 Water Main Sewer and Street Improvement Contract. The total amount for both change orders is a decrease to the contract amount of $203,861.72 So that's a good thing. Next, for action is Resolution 5R11, by which the city council would authorize the use of motive fuel tax funds for roadway construction and related engineering services in the amount of $1,000,000 for the 2011 MFT Street Resurfacing Project and $110,606 for design and construction engineering services by city staff. Next is Ordinance 12011, which is for introduction, which decreases the number of Class B liquor licenses due to a change in ownership of Pete Miller's Steakhouse. The Liquor Commissioner has also requested that, when it comes time for committee reports, that the committee chair suspend the rules. So we'll move introduction and handle that when the committee chair makes the report. Same thing for the next ordinance, which is 13011, which increases the number of Class B liquor licenses to permit issuance of Pete Miller's Steakhouse license due to a change in ownership. This will increase the number of licenses to 16. For action tonight is Ordinance 1011, which amends the city code 7151 to, of membership to the Board of Local Improvements. This simply ensures that the city code complies with the state statute and uses current job titles and board members. Next is Ordinance 3011, which amends various sections of Title 8 Mobile Food Vehicle Vendors, Chapter 26 of the city code, and includes items such as having to do with the fee for licenses after a certain date, and ensures compliance with the city code, and other matters having to do with temporary food permits. This is for action tonight. Under Planning and Development Committee, I'm going to take this off the, pardon me?
It is off of.
Okay, but I'm going to take this, I'm going to do that one at a time. The home funding request is off the committee, is off the agenda, and will be addressed by the committee chair. Item P2, and I'm going to take P3 off also, the items having to do with Kendall College, that will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 0711, granting a special use for a type-two restaurant at 824 Clark, has been amended. It is for introduction. Do you want me to take that off also? It's for introduction. That has an amendment, but it is for introduction, so I'm going to leave it on unless anybody has an objection. Next is Ordinance 6011, granting a special use for a dwelling multiple family at 1932 Maple in the B1. There was an amendment to this, so we'll have the committee chair address that also. Next is Ordinance 5011, which amends, this is under Human Services, it amends Title 7 Public Ways, Chapter 8 Trees and Shrubs, to add a Section 8 tree preservation. This is for introduction, and staff has requested that it be returned to the committee once it is introduced. Under other committees, Ordinance 2011, this is from the Rules Committee, eliminating the Board of Examiners of Stationary Engineers, Boiler, and Water Tenders. This is a committee that the League of Women Voters and the Rules Committee agree has been inactive and unstaffed for years, and therefore, we no longer have a need for it. So this is for action tonight. Madam Mayor, there are no appointments. This completes the consent agenda, and therefore, I move approval.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. I believe the first item is the minutes. City Clerk?
The reason the minutes was taken off, if you look at page two of the minutes, when it stated, where is it? About the converged communication system that would be relocated, that would be located at the second location, be it 1732 Main Street I had, but it should be 1732 Central Street. And that's also the correction on page seven. Those are two corrections for the minutes.
Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the corrected minutes.
I move approval of the corrected minutes.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the corrected minutes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes pass. Next is Alderman Holmes, Administration and Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move approval of Ordinance 12-O-11, decreasing the number of Class B liquor license due to the change in ownership of Pete Miller's Steakhouse.
Could you move, because we did introduce it?
Oh, okay.
And Alderman Rainey.
Well, then I would move to suspend.
Thank you.
I would move to suspend the rules.
Thank you very much. The only explanation I can give for those of you that I didn't speak to is, for continuity of business purposes, I've been asked to have the rules suspended so that there wouldn't be any gap in serving alcohol at Pete Miller's. Well, they're going to keep the jazz, that was my concern. All right. City Clerk, could you call the roll for suspending the rules?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Thank you all. Alderman Holmes?
Okay, then I would move to decrease the number.
We don't need, didn't we, we did decrease, we just need.
We just need.
You just need to, you just need to move the increase.
Okay, well, I would move to increase the number of Class B liquor license to permit the issuance to Pete Miller's Steakhouse.
Perfect. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
That completes the report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Point of information, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think we have to do both.
Well, see, that's what I thought.
I don't think we can, then we'll have more licenses in force than we're saying.
Oh, you're right. I see it, okay. Sorry, Alderman Holmes, you were right, I was wrong.
I think increasing was the most important one, but.
I know, you can tell where my brain is. I'm sorry about that. All right, it's, Alderman Holmes did move to decrease it. And, well, for a slight few seconds, there will be one too many. Could I have a, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you call the roll for decreasing?
From 15, from 16 to 15.
Yeah.
Decrease.
Yeah. We suspended the rules in beginning.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. Before I get in any more trouble for not having followed Alderman Holmes correctly, it does count, we did suspend the rules, hopefully that counts for both. All right.
And I did ask Master Rainey first before, to make sure I was right.
I will never, ever argue with either one of you. Okay. Now, who's the new?
I am.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Yes.
Sorry, you are.
It gave me another title. It took one away and gave me another. Yes, item P1, we had a lot of discussions in P and D regarding this particular item, and the committee decided to approve the grant for the $290,500 to rehab the units and to withhold approval of the loan to refinance on the loan. So, at this particular point in time, I'm moving what the committee has approved, and that is that we recommend approval of the application of the, for home funding for Housing Opportunity Development Corporation for the rehabilitation of four one-bedroom units at 131 Cowan Avenue for a total of $290,500. Can I get a second?
All right. It's been moved and seconded, seeing no lights. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
The number, 290?
$290,500.
Oh, 500, sorry.
That's what, yeah, that's, okay. Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Okay, Madam Mayor, item P2 and P3, Alderman Fisk had requested that we hold these two items in committee for further discussion, and so we've done that, so it's held. They are held.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Item P5 is, no, P4 we introduced. So it's introduced. Next time around, we'll get into a discussion of the, at committee level for P4, though, for your information, we voted to approve the ZBA's recommendation that the operation hours be 2:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday nights. Okay? So it'll come back to us, hopefully, with that kind of amendment. P5, this is, the, okay, let me just read it as is. Staff recommended denial of the proposed special use permit to protect the integrity and potential revitalization of the commercial area centered at Maple Avenue and Foster The approval of the special use application would remove the possibility of commercial space occupying current commercial storefronts and lessen the critical mass of commercial space in the business district. The ZBA had voted for to, to recommend approval of the application. Site Plan and Appearance Committee voted to recommend approval of the project as well. At committee level, at committee level, we had a long discussion, and the alderman of the ward, Alderman Holmes, had argued that we should keep the commercial space as is as opposed to transforming that first floor into a residential space. And so therefore, we have agreed to deny the proposal, the special use.
It's continued. It's continued.
For six months.
Yeah, it's continued for six months.
That's true. Yeah, we voted to table it to a date certain for June 27th, June 27th. You're right. Okay? So then, that's all I need to say, we don't need to vote on that. Okay, all right. Thank you. And that completes my report, Madam.
Thank you very much, Alderman Jean-Petis. And.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Jean-Petis, could you explain why we're holding it for six months?
We're holding it for six months to give our economic development staff an opportunity to work, work with the owners to try to find tenants for that space. The argument was made that with our new crack team of economic experts, that we should be able to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
It's just going back. All right. Next is call of the wards. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Jean-Petis?
There's a meeting tomorrow at 1818 Dempster-Hartwood Center for all of the surrounding community organizations. Issues will be the plaza will be visited by the director of the 311 Center, the chief of the fire department, and of course, representative from the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to make a referral to the Rules Committee to consider changing the order of business to provide for citizen comment before special orders of business to try to.
I think the city manager and I had already concluded that that should be done, but.
Thank you.
Completely agree with you. Alderman Holmes?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
No report, Madam.
All right. Alderman Grover?
No report, again, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, too. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to encourage everyone to attend the CTA meeting on Thursday night at 6:00 at Fleetwood Jordan Center. Call the mayor for a ride.
I am that desperate to get people there, absolutely.
Me, too, yeah. Also, I think it would be interesting, Alderman Jean-Petis, several people have indicated to me that they're very interested in what's going to happen at Dempster Dodge. So would it be appropriate for people not in the neighborhood to come to the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Also, I don't have a date yet, but I will be setting up a community meeting regarding several things. One, there are starting to be inquiries in my ward of people who want to know, did the city buy a unit in my building? So there's that curiosity, because we're evidently not providing information to condominiums in every case that a building, a unit is being purchased. And second of all, about the recycling center. And second of all, about the recycling center, the community gardens, and the animal shelter. So, but I haven't, I don't have a date yet, but I'll be posting it on the message board soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Thank you. The ninth ward, next ninth ward, meeting will be on February 22 at 7:00 PM in the Piccolo Theater, which is located in the Main Street Metro Station. Presentations will include information about the 311 new system. Ridgeville Park District will be doing a presentation, as well as the Evanston Fire Department. Also, the Evanston Chamber of Commerce is holding its annual legislative breakfast this Friday at the Hilton Garden Inn at 7:45 AM. Also, people on the south side of town, please check out the new Ridgeville Park District website, it's great. You can sign up for classes there. Also, Larry Severdin is sponsoring a property tax appeal seminar on February 1 at 7:00 PM at Hill Education Center at 1500 McDaniel. And if you haven't done so yet, please sign up to volunteer to assist elderly and disabled residents.
With shoveling snow.
Start over.
I gotta start over.
We, we.
Can I talk so fast?
I think we heard a lot of it.
No, I think it was fine. Thank you.
Fine, great. Well, I just want, ninth ward meeting, February 22, 7:00 PM, Piccolo Theater.
Thank you very much. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5ILCS120/2A, C5, C6, C11, and C21.
City Clerk, could you, could you call the roll? Did we have a motion?
Yes.
While I was paying no attention, seconded. Thank you. City Clerk, please.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Grover.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Nine to zero.
Nine, nine to zero, the motion passes.